Here.
Tim Vance?
Here.
Member Matthews?
Here.
Member Singleton? Member Bellinger, Delinger? And Councilmember Singleton?
Here again.
All right, it's all right to.
I'm here.
Okay.
We're all here. We're all here. And we'll start by asking Councilman Delinger to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then the invocation.
To the flag, and under the stars of the mayor. To the republic, for which is the change. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and every essence.
Please join me in invocation if you wish. Thank you, Lord, for bringing us together tonight as a council, staff, and community. Please grant us the wisdom to deliberate and serve our neighbors to the best of our abilities and judgment. Be with those who are ill and bless them with health. Bless our town in this new year with prosperity and peace. In his name, amen.
Thank you, Councilman Delinger. And first, I'd like to say welcome citizens and community partners. I'm glad to see you here. Your council is grateful for your input and your support. We're glad to see all our neighbors who take their town seriously. We and your town staff take it seriously, too. This is serious business. This is your house you're talking about, our house. It's important that you express your opinions, and we hope the system will work to everybody's satisfaction. We'll do our best. These meetings are serious, and I'm just going to ask that everyone take it seriously and exhibit the same respectful behavior here that you would in church or in a courtroom. Well, let's try to avoid talking when other people are talking. Let's don't cheer and clap and or boo anyone, please. We'll all try to get along here. And likewise, people will treat you the same way when it's your turn to speak. So we have a lot to deal with this evening, and we want to get rolling along. I'm required to remind us that the first portion here is petitions and comments, and this is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in the agenda. We have some very important things on the agenda, and we will be asking for some input on those very specifically later. And the council may take action on the things that come up in the petitions here, or we may refer them to a later date or refer them to staff. So I'll ask the town clerk if anyone has signed up to address it under the petitions and comments section.
We have Ray Johnson, who signed up to speak.
Okay, and that's for something that's not on the agenda.
And also Mr. Chris McGinnis, but I'm not sure if he's still present or not.
Okay, well, would you call the first name of the person that's here?
Ray Johnson.
Okay, would you address the podium, please? Did we have somebody to change their mind? Excuse me?
He said he left. He left.
Oh, he left. Okay, so we have no one left who wanted to address during the petitions. Okay, thank you. We have a good translator down here, a good translator. I don't hear very well, but my good friend Adrian, he can let me know. Okay, okay, so we move on to the adoption of the agenda. And I'm going to ask the council members, is there a motion to accept?
Excuse me, before you ask for the motion, apologize. There's one item that's that got omitted under presentation, and that's the recognition of Officer Derek McCarter. So we do want to do that under presentations.
Oh, absolutely. I thought it was a strong police presence here tonight. I thought it was because of the rowdy crowd, but it's for a special event. It's for a special event. Okay?
Yeah, it was on the pending agenda, but we failed to get it over to the actual agenda, so we definitely want to do that.
Yes, indeed. Would you please come forward and tell us about the presentation?
But you could do the adoption of the agenda first, and then we'll go right into that.
Geez, I wanted to go right to that. Okay, we'll adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, unanimously, we adopt the agenda. Now we get to the presentations. Okay. Chief McKeever, could you come up and tell us about the presentation we're making this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. It is my pleasure to recognize Officer Derek McCarter tonight. He is retiring after over thirty years of credible service and all with the town of Garner. Derek comes from Philadelphia by way of Shaw University, where he received a basketball scholarship to play basketball in college. Derek is married and has several kids. I won't say your names, but bless me. Derek is also, he found the love of the calling of being a law enforcement officer. Over the past fifteen years, he has served as a school resource officer at Garner Magnet High School. And I know over the years, the kids have fallen in love with Derek, have grown to respect the police, all because of Officer McCarter. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight, for the final time, as a Garner police officer, Derek McCarter.
Just want to thank everybody for being here. I want to thank all the town council members, Mayor Rodney Dickerson, for all your support ever since I've been with the Garner Police Department. Y'all have always put the police department first with helping us with anything we needed or any type of things to help us fight crime, to make it easier for us to catch the bad guys here in Garner. Love Garner, love being at the high school. Just came a time and point, I said, it's two major factors made me decide it was time to leave. One was I had a high school kid, ninth grader, come up to me at the beginning of the year and said, hi, Officer McCarter. I said, hey, how you doing? And she said, you was here when my mom and dad attended Garner Magnet High School. And of course, I didn't believe her. But I have all the yearbooks in my office, and I went back and looked, and sure enough. And my mind started going. I just said, I'll just leave that right there. The other major point was I had a lady come up to me at the basketball game. She said, hey, Officer McCarter, how you doing? You remember me? And I said, I'm sorry, I just do not this time. She said, well, back in, when I first started in nineteen ninety-five, she said that you responded to a traffic accident and I was pregnant. And when she said that, it all came back to my mind, and I remembered exactly what, who she was talking about. That was the only person that this happened to. So I called EMS for, of course EMS transported her. She said, yeah, I ended up having a boy. And I said, yeah. She said, let me show you a picture of him. So she shows me a picture of him, and he is now a state trooper. And I am like, it is, I like, I just can't, it's time to go. I just could not do it anymore. But I'm enjoying my time. I love the kids at the high school. I know everybody at the high school, far as the principals, they support me and I support them. And like I said, I love Garner. Garner is the second home other than to West Philly High School, where I played basketball at. Some of you might know Gene Banks. He attended my school, but he was a couple of years before me. But just want to say thanks to everybody. Thanks to my wife, Evelyn. Do you want to stand up? My wife Evelyn, our four kids, three of them could not be here. Derek, Ebony, and Tiffany could not be here at this time. My other daughter Tammy is here. Tammy, you want to stand up? Come on. And her husband, Donald Ellison, my son-in-law. Of course, I have enough time with the five grandkids. Amaya, you want to stand up? Noah, you want to stand up? Josiah, you want your dad to pick you up? Prince, you want to stand up for us? Oh, you're doing, come on, stand so everybody can see you. And of course, the leader right here, Gabby, which we call a Gab- But all that, I just want to thank everybody for their support. And like I said, I'll still be in Garner. I love Garner, so I'll be around. And I'll be looking to seeing you in the gym, Phil, so make sure you-
Absolutely.
Hold up your, and then meet me in there.
I want you to continue to be my mentor.
Yes, sir.
I can grow up to be like you when that-
Yes, sir.
Great job. So on behalf of the town, town staff, you know, just want to thank Derek for all the hard work he's put in these last few years, these many years. And as you can see, he's a very, very good police officer, but on top of that, he's a great person. Just really respectful, takes his job serious. He's always been solid, and somebody we could count on, on the staff. And you got to be a special person to be a school resource officer for that long and put up with generations and generations of kids and how they change over the years. So we thank you for that. And you've made a positive influence on a lot of, a lot of people at the school, as well as here at the town of Garner. So with that, we're going to present you with a gift here, and we just thank you for your years of service.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, I believe that brings us to the consent agenda. Thank you very much for your service, sir. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you. And we'll let the little ones make their way slowly to the door. Thanks for coming, kids. And the consent agenda, if any council member sees anything we need to move around, let me know. If not, I'll ask for a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay, Councilman Vance makes the motion, and Council Singleton seconds, and I ask all in favor of adopting that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, and now we'll flip over to the public hearings. And the first public hearing is actually a special use permit, which is a quasi-judicial hearing. Rarely do we have the quasi-judicial, usually the more legislative, which are a little more informal. But these particular actions require a special set of rules, and it requires that I ask before each one of these hearings, this question, or these questions of each council member. They're required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that's not subject to change, if they've had any ex parte communications, if they have any close familial business or other associational relationships with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome of this case. And this is a fact finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, noise levels. Council members must disclose discussions pertaining to this case or any information received outside of the hearing. This property was considered at prior council meetings in conjunction with rezoning and special use permit decisions. And now I ask, do any council members have any additional disclosures of ex parte communication? Good, thank you. All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk. Please proceed to the back corner of the room to be sworn in if you plan to testify at this particular section. And we have some candidates. Thank you. The staff report is offered as evidence in the case and will be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person withstanding. At this point, I'm going to recognize a member of our planning staff, Ms. Allison Jones Harris, to see what you would like to tell us about this and bring us up to date.
Mr. Mayor? I am here to discuss SOD building addition, special use permits, SGP SP seventeen thirty, M twenty-three oh one. The applicant and owner is Broward Haven Exchange, Maggie Sod, is located at fifty-four oh one Raner Road. The tract size is about six and a half acres, and is requested to add an additional seventy-five hundred square feet of office and warehouse and two buildings from an existing site located at fifty-four oh one Raner Road. Just want to give some context to this application. You normally don't see modifications, but with our new UDO, major modifications are, modifications are considered major when they increase the existing floor area by ten percent or you're adding more than ten parking spaces. In this modification, both of those triggers were met, therefore, we're here tonight. Proposed uses office and warehouse. The current zone is light industrial with conditional use twenty-five. There's no overlay district for this property, and the setbacks are from the conditional use district, which is thirty-five feet for the front, zero feet for rear and side, and corner is thirty-five feet. Neighborhood meeting. There were forty-six properties identified by staff. They were mailed letters notifying them of tonight's meeting, first, excuse me, not tonight's meeting, but the neighborhood meeting, by first-class mail. The meeting was held November twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-three at the Garner Chamber of Commerce at six o'clock, and there were no attendees. And this is just the overall view of the site. Here is the, one of the additions, and here is the other addition down here. And this is the overall of the proposed buildings. These buildings will match the existing building that's on the site at this point. There's no open space required for this project as this is a non-residential development. Landscape and buffer requirements. The tree coverage, this plan required to preserve or have a twelve percent in tree coverage. They're preserving fourteen point eight percent of tree coverage on the site. And the street buffers are fifteen foot in width and seven and a half feet in width for the northern border, northern buffer. I will, let me go back to this other slide, sorry. Can't see it down here, but in this area and further south of the property, there's a lot of wetlands and new river buffer. So those buffers that we would normally see, they are there technically, but those new river buffers and wetlands are in that same area. So the buffer requirements and buffer landscape and requirements are being met by the existing vegetation. The lighting site plan meets the UDO requirements for lighting. The parking is based for one thousand, excuse me, one space, we have a thousand square feet for warehouse. And for office, there's five hundred square feet for every one, one space, every five square feet, excuse me. They're required to have twelve, and they're proposing twelve. Inspection department, along with the fire department, has reviewed and approved this plan as proposed. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, you can see a better picture of this now. There are FEMA flood planes and wetlands on this site, along with new river buffers, do exist. There's no development being proposed in these areas. For some odd reason that there is development, they will have to get a permit from the governing authority to develop in those areas. Stormwater. The SOD building addition is a commercial development site that is not located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to water quality requirements only for nitrogen. The previous study done for Whitehead Business Park East demonstrated that detaining the water would be harmful to the downstream. So no water quality is being required at the site. This site does not require a nitrogen offset payment either. The site will be served by City of Raleigh's Water and Sewer Infrastructure. Both water and sewer are along Raner Road right now. The building will be served by existing driveways off of Raner Road, and Raner Road is currently built out to its ultimate section, so no front end improvements will be required for this site. After plan revisions, staff finds project as proposed, meets the regulations of UDO, and may be approved as proposed. The applicant is here and along with the plan preparer, if you have any questions for them, and I'm here, too, for any questions for me as well.
Do any of the council members wish to ask questions at this point, Ms. Harris? Okay, then we'll move along, and we'll recognize the applicant who will be providing a presentation as well. If you would state your name, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe at three oh one Fayetteville Street. Also with me is Keith Roberts, who served as the engineer for this project with Timmins Group, and then the property owner, Maggie Sod, as well. We do have a presentation, although I'll preface it by saying that I'll actually start by making sure the record's clear. In addition to the staff report that's been admitted, I'd also ask that the parties' presentations and the site plans all be admitted into the record as well. And so we do have a presentation, but I'll preface by saying that this, I think, is pretty conclusively established in the staff report already, that we meet all of the quasi-judicial findings for special use permit. So in light of the fact that there may be a long hearing tonight, what I propose is I can summarize the findings, or we'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the individual elements, if there are any concerns.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any questions from the council members regarding the presentation so far? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any individuals signed up to speak on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I have the sign in sheets. No, no other members of the public have signed up to speak on this.
Okay, thank you. Well, unless there's some other questions from the council members, I'm going to close the public hearing. Closed. And I'm going to ask the council members, is there a motion related to this special use permit?
Mr. Mayor, I find the applicant SUP SP 1730 M 2301 meets the town eight criteria for special use permit as identified in Article 3.9.2D. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP SP 1730 MP 23-01 SOD building addition.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Each of you should have at your, an updated motion sheet that actually reflects the current UDO section. If you would amend your motion to include the current article.
Just read it again, or...
That's probably the easiest.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I shall read again, the amended motion. I find the application SUP SP 1730 M 23-01 meets the town eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 4.7.4.D.1. Therefore, move that the town council approve SUP SP 17-30-M23-01 SOD building addition.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Vance has made the motion, and Mrs. Behringer has seconded, and I'll now call for a vote, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. And there aren't hearing none, it's passed unanimously, and that will conclude that part of this, of this hearing. Thank you, Ms. Jones. This takes us to the other items that are here for public hearings, and these are not quite as strictly governed as the quasi judicial. These are known as legislative hearings, which do not require the sworn testimony. However, persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the clerk. Town staff will present a report, followed by the applicant, and persons supporting or opposing the application will be recognized to speak. The first one coming up is the voluntary satellite annexation petition, Garner Five Industrial. And we will be recognizing Mr. Bowie of the town staff for the initial presentation. Mr. Bowie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I will be presenting Garner Five Industrial voluntary annexation petition, annexation 2309. General case information, the property is owned by Garner Five Industrial LLC, annexation application, annexation 2309. This is a satellite annexation request. The property is located, located at Garner, Garner Business Park Drive, Wake County PIN 1730-845677, real estate ID 006-0338, and a portion of 006-0257. The property is 22.47 acres in size, and the recommendation is adopt annexation ordinance. Here you will see an aerial photo of the property. And that concludes this presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay, I hear no questions from the council members. Is there any other individual who had signed up to speak on this topic? Okay, that being the case, then, I will close the public hearing. I just love that little hammer, that's great. And now I'll ask the council member, is there a motion to adopt the necessary ordinance?
Our move, we approve ordinance 2024-5238.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Mr. Vance, and I will now ask all council members in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no. Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the third public hearing is a voluntary annexation related to Golden Trace, and our presenter from the staff is Mr. Bowie. Please tell us what we need to know.
Yes, sir. This presentation is for Golden Trace, is a voluntary annexation petition, annexation The property is owned by Amanda H. Bryan, Richard S. Slater, Robert L. Bryan, and Timothy S. Bryan. This is a contiguous annexation request. The property is located at 1725 1805, 1813, and 1817 New Bethel Church Road. Wake County PINs 162923, 1622, 162923-3112, 162923-7034, and 162923-9795. Real estate ID numbers 0009437, 0257113, and 0009418. The area is 47.62 plus or minus acres, and the recommendation is to adopt annexation ordinance. Here you will see an aerial photo of the site in question. And that concludes the presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Does the council members have any questions for Mr. Bowie? Not hearing any, are there any individuals who signed up to speak on this project?
Mr. Mayor, Collier Marsh with Parker Poe, 301 Fayetteville Street. Tucker Anis with Lennar here, we're just here for any questions.
Okay, any questions for the applicant and their representative?
Questions.
Another great job, Mr. Marsh. Well, hearing no other people scheduled to speak, we'll close this hearing, and I'll ask the council members for a motion.
Mayor, we adopt ordinance 2024-523.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion by Mr. Matthews and a second by Mr. Vance to adopt that ordinance, and I'm going to ask...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
There was a typo in the agenda. This is actually ordinance 2024-5240.
I'll remake that motion, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 2024-5240.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Matthews made the amended motion, Mr. Vance made the second, and I'll ask again, council members in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have four yays and one no from Councilman Dallinger. The motion passes. Thank you for your help there, Mr. Bowie. Are you going to leave us now? Oh, no, you're doing so well. If you have your agenda, let me try to explain what we're doing here. This is a very serious and complex matter of a large development going in on 401, and you see the last, number four of the public hearings is an annexation petition, annexation petition. You'll see that the first item, number one, on new and old business, is the conditional rezoning. Took me a few minutes and much instruction from our town manager and our town attorney to understand what we're doing. But this, for this project to go forward, it takes two things. It has to be annexed by the town to provide water and sewer and services, and that's the one that's up here for its public hearing on that matter. The second part of this project moving ahead would be to approve the rezoning request that was made some time ago. It had a public hearing here in this room, many of you were here for the public hearing, we had a lot of public input, we've had a lot of input since. At that time, the council moved it over to the planning commission for further intensive review, many of you were at that meeting by the planning commission. The planning commission has sent it back here with the recommendation for a final decision on the rezoning. So for, since we're talking really about the same thing, we're going to try to kind of do a two for one to save some wind and some time. But the first one, the annexation petition is standing on its own, but we'll kind of talk about them together. And the annexation has to be done, or has to be done simultaneously with a decision on the zoning, so it's kind of two for one that we're going to talk about. And I'm going to hand the mic over to Mr. Trezenberg to give us a little, a little further detail, and then we'll try to explain again how we're going to work our way through two of one and get an answer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, public. This will be a very short intro, just much like Reggie's presentations were, just with a little added nuance and explanation. So we do need to have the public hearing in order to consider the rezoning. So this is a voluntary satellite annexation petition that was filed by the applicants. And this was again filed back in 2022 with the zoning application, so the case number is 2210. You see the list of property owners there, generally at 5715 Fayetteville Road. Multiple PIN numbers and real estate IDs, I won't list them all, they're in your staff report, but the total area combined is about 72 and a quarter acres. So our recommendation, as you noted, Mr. Mayor, the two are tied together. So should the council be inclined to approve the associated development application, then the council should adopt the annexation ordinance prior to establishing zoning on the subject property. We can't, we can't establish zoning for something if it's not in our jurisdiction. So conversely, if the council is inclined to deny the associated development application, then the council should refuse the petition to annex into the town's corporate limits. And again, just for reference purposes, we have the site shown there. You see Georgia's Landing across the way, and a parcel that connected to our water and, the Raleigh Water and Sewer System in our jurisdiction here, I think that was about a year ago. So again, that's all we have to present on the annexation piece. When you're ready to move to the rezoning, Ashley will come up and give a short...
Well, while you're there, let me get a little input on this, on the annexation petition. I understand that this has been through the town's review, and a key part of annexation decisions is based on the ability of the town to be able to provide the necessary services, and that has, that review has been completed by the town. Okay, so in that case, we probably won't be talking about that very much, and as part of the annexation, I don't think we're going to try to rehash what the town has already decided on that part. And we will be, and if we close this public hearing, then we will move on to the hearing, the final decision making on the rezoning, that's what we're trying to do, fairly, all involved. Now let me ask on the annexation, are there any, council members have questions, Mr. Trezenberg, on the annexation? Do we have any other individuals signed up to speak on the annexation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. So for both the voluntary satellite annexation and the tier two conditional rezoning, the same four individuals have signed up. One is Mr. Birch, who's the attorney representing the applicant, and then three other individuals indicated that they are opposed to both the satellite annexation and the rezoning.
Okay, so I think what we'd want to do at this point is have the applicant's representative address us and tell us about the annexation. If you would, state your name and tell us what we need to know.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners. Again, just on the annexation, as Mayor, the staff report reflect, that the annexation meets the statutory requirements, but just, again, no other comments other than that, and just to let you know we're here if the council does have any questions on the annexation.
Okay, Mrs. Jones, that concludes that part of the presentation. You're suggesting that perhaps, as we move on to the second phase, that includes talking about the rezoning, that's where we might accept some other comments.
Yes, my understanding is that we're going to hear on both issues and then have the public comments, since there's only three individuals who have signed up to speak.
Okay, okay, if we're down to that number, that would be fine. So that being the case, Mr. Birch, would you like to expound a little bit on the rezoning request, or make a presentation on that part of it?
Or do you want to hear from staff first?
Staff presentation.
I want to hear from staff first. Thank you, I told you this is a little different, we're trying to wade our way through this expeditionally and fairly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is the rezoning portion of the presentation for 401 Crossing, CZPD 2203. The applicant is Laura Paulman of the McAdams Company. There are some various owners listed here and in your staff report, and the site is located on US 401. It's approximately 72.24 acres, and this is the planned development district request, which is the PUD book and written conditions. If the plan is adopted tonight, it would be adopted as a commercial mixed-use conditional district under our new zoning districts. Here is an aerial of the site location, so as you can see, it's on the south side of Fayetteville Road. It is surrounded by Wake County subdivisions, Pine Dale Acres, and Colonial Heights. There is some park property further to the east, and then Wake Christian Academy to the north, and Georgia's Landing subdivision to the south. Adjacent land use and zoning, as I said, surrounding it in the north and south, and on all sides really, is the Wake County R40W zoned single family. To the north is also the Wake Christian Academy, and then to the west, there is a light industrial parcel that was annexed into town limits, and that is the Crown Flooring property. The applicant has not proposed many changes since you saw this project last, but I did highlight in blue some of the things that have changed, so I'll call those out specifically. But if you have questions about any of the other zoning conditions, please feel free to stop me and ask me. So since you all saw it, the applicant has added to the entertainment category of permitted uses, outdoor athletic or entertainment facility, and then water slides, driving ranges, miniature golf, batting cages, or similar uses. The rest of the permitted use table remains the same, various household living, community service, daycare, entertainment office, restaurant, retail and sales, and vehicle and sales and service uses that are permitted in the conditional use district. On condition number two, we did clarify that the open space would be estimated to be between 25 and 35% of the total developable land area. The rest of the condition remains the same with the commitment to a minimum of three of those elements listed there. Again, there are a number of other conditions related to the site amenities and the open spaces, some additional buffering, and some commitments to evergreen and native landscaping, some various architectural commitments to address the quality and appearance of the various building types. And then condition number 16 was amended to add that the multifamily amenity area will also include a dog wash station, a parcel or mailroom, a co-working area, elevators, and covered parking. And then also, there was some clarifying language added to condition number 18, just clarifying that the multifamily apartments would be located a minimum of 60 feet away from existing single family residential lots or structures. Again, some more architectural commitments, and then a commitment that the amenities will be built concurrently with the phase that is in development, and that all off-street parking will meet the minimum of the UDO, so they will not be asking for any reductions, and then guaranteeing some access for the Carlton property and some other commitments related to streets. And then the applicant, as of Friday, has proposed two additional conditions, which we have outlined here in blue. So the first is that post-development peak runoff shall not exceed pre-development peak runoff for the 24, one-year, 10-year, 25-year, and 100-year storm events. Owner has also offered to provide at least 20 dwelling units within the master plan area as affordable for a period of no less than five years, for households earning no more than 120% AMI. If the total number... If the total number of dwelling units on the property exceeds 700, then the total number of dwelling units that must be affordable will be no less than 10% of the total number in excess of 500. The obligation would be, begin upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy of the 500th dwelling unit, but some or all of those may be designated as affordable in satisfaction of that condition prior to that time. The master plan general information, again, I'll just give some high-level details since you've seen this project before, but it is approximately 72.24 acres, 68 acres of that being the residential, and five acres of that being the commercial. Here is the project master plan. So you can see the commercial component here closest to 401, and then the main site access here that goes down the central portion of the property, again, with the second access exiting onto Fayetteville Road. The yellow represents the apartment buildings. There is an amenity for the apartments, as well as some townhome area with an amenity provided for the townhomes. The existing pond would remain on site in addition to some additional storm water control measures, with a trail around those ponds to activate those spaces. These smaller units would be the cottage units, which are the standalone rental property that have some shared common space behind. And then there is an emergency access only onto St. Patrick Drive here. So the future land use map determination, the 2018 Garner Forward Plan designated this area as an active recreation center and low-density residential. The active recreation refers to ballparks, recreation centers, parks, and other areas designed for public engagement. In some cases, those may be facilities that charge fees, such as a YMCA, but generally they're public and publicly owned. And then the low-density residential supports development up to two and a half units per acre. So based on those two determinations, it was determined to be inconsistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Plan. We did want to acknowledge that the area falls within a commercial area of change, which is that orange and white circle that goes around the entire site. That area was to designate that those conditions may change, that it wasn't unexpected, that commercial may develop in the future in that area, based on water and sewer availability. But ultimately, the future land use designation was inconsistent based on the active recreation and low-density residential. The 2018 transportation plan was determined to be consistent based on the road improvements that are being done with this plan, so the additional curb, gutter, sidewalk along the 401 frontage. And then it was also determined to be consistent with the Parks, Recreations, and Greenways Plan. TRC had Parks and Recreation staff who reviews the plan, and they did not indicate a desire for any parkland dedication. It also falls within the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. The site is designated as urban, existing urban noncompliance, with the residential density maximums controlled by the underlying zoning, and the impervious surface limits may be increased to 70% with the one-inch rainfall detained. With the commitments that they have made at the master plan level to capture that one-inch rainfall, it would be considered in conformity with that plan. So at the planning commission meeting in November, there was several items discussed. I outlined those for you in your staff report, but I'll go through a number of them here as well. So there was some clarification about the number of SEMs being provided, clarification about the open spaces and what counts towards that, expressing appreciation for the mix of housing types in the commercial component, but questioning whether enough commercial was included, expressing concern with the proposed density and the incongruity of character with the existing neighborhood. Open spaces look to be designed as an afterthought, expressing appreciation for the multi-layered product and central spaces, and general intrigue about the cottage courts concept. Inquiring if there would be any mixed-use buildings included in this proposal, asking if there was any consideration for a single-family detached to be included in the proposal, and why the project does not integrate or connect into the existing neighborhoods. Inquiring about the cottage units and if there was any precedent for that type of product in the area. Clarifying the proposed density, clarifying if the community could be or would be age-restricted. Asking for additional information about parking requirements, questioning if the character of the architecture matches that of the existing neighborhood. Questioning the walkability of the neighborhood, considering the distance from the commercial to the furthest residential units. Clarifying if duplexes would be allowed in the development or would be included in development, asking about the environmental study, and clarifying the growth rate used in the TIA. There were a number of citizens who attended, but they selected three to speak on their behalf, and so those citizens had concerns about access to the active recreation spaces and trails, lamenting the loss of existing open spaces and open land, noting inconsistencies with the future land use map that was in effect, and the draft Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan that has since been adopted. Noting a lack of compatibility with the existing neighborhood, expressing concerns over the proposed density and character, commenting on stormwater and flooding concerns, clarifying the rules of the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, and noting impacts to wildlife and other environmental concerns. So the planning commission voted unanimously to accept the consistency statement below. We, the planning commission, accept the staff's consistency analysis and find this request to rezone 72.24 acres from Wake County Residential Watershed 40R40W to Town of Garner Planned Unit Development, PDC15 conditional, for a mixed use of a maximum of 300 single-family residential units, 500 multifamily residential units, and 45,000 square feet of commercial space inconsistent with the future land use map designation of active recreation and low-density residential in both use and density, despite introducing a commercial component as the plan envisioned would likely occur. However, the plan is consistent with other adopted plans, including the transportation plan and the PERGCR master plan and the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. So your charge here tonight is to determine the reasonableness of the request, and we have provided some recommended motions. The two highlighted for you here include that inconsistent determination from the planning commission, and the applicant is here with a presentation as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Very helpful. Does council members have any questions for Ms. Harris? Okay. In that case, we'll move to the applicant. Thank you for your flexibility as we try to work through this kind of two at a time, but we're certainly glad to hear anything you can tell us about the project.
Yes, sir. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners. Again, with me this evening is Woody Williams with SLI Capital, the applicant Laura Holloman with McAdams. Appreciate staff's report, and again, just want to remind the council that the goal of this rezoning is to provide a variety of housing options for one's life cycle, serving young professionals, young families, to empty nesters, along with the neighborhood, serving retail that is walkable not just to this development, but to surrounding neighborhoods, and the provision of open space, all to promote a live-work-play environment here. Throughout this process, we have responded to feedback from staff, neighbors, town council in the way of zoning conditions, changes to our plan over the past 18-plus months or so. Just as a reminder, we've removed all vehicular connections to the neighborhood streets except for the one emergency connection. That we turned a portion of the commercial area, removed that, and put it as a tree preservation area. We've prohibited construction traffic on the neighborhood streets. We've limited building height closest to the neighbors and increased buffers. One request that we have heard from town council and the neighbors is the desire for the applicant to detain stormwater for the 100-year storm event. And so we have now done that, as staff acknowledged in their report, so that will be an added condition to this rezoning, that the applicant will detain to that 100-year storm event. Additionally, in response to town council requests, we've also added a condition addressing kind of attainable housing, and can speak to the details of that if there are questions. But again, just want to highlight our plan consistency. As staff report noted, we're consistent with the town's transportation plan, Parks, Rec, Greenway Cultural Resources Plan, the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, and want to highlight that the recently adopted, although not yet effective Garner Forward Plan does designate this property as neighborhoods, and kind of recognition that the old active recreation kind of assumed that that's applicable to publicly-owned land. This is not publicly-owned land, right? This area, entire area, is now designated neighborhoods, until we believe we're consistent with that. But even so, want to highlight kind of the reasonableness and in the public interest items. Again, providing increased housing supply and housing variety compatible with the surrounding area, significant off-site transportation and utility improvements that will serve not only this, but additional future development in this area, no vehicular impact on the neighborhood streets, providing extensive open space, and again, now detaining for that higher-level storm event, and ensuring attainable housing within the development. So we would ask that this council find that the request is consistent with the plan, but even if inconsistent, that it's reasonable and in the public interest. But again, myself and others on our team are here if there are any questions from this council.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Birch. Are there any questions from the council for Mr. Birch? No questions this time. Thank you very much. As I mentioned earlier, this part of the discussion, as a standalone rezoning process, has been heard before this council, heard before the planning commission. We've received a number of pieces of communication, both for and against this on an ongoing basis. It's a big, complex, very important project. And while there's typically no comment from individuals at this point in the process, because of the great interest in it and the complexity, I made an exception, talked with some of the representatives, and said if we could hold it to two representatives, three minutes each, and now I think I understood from the town clerk, we've actually got three that want to speak.
Three, yes.
Three, okay. Yeah, well, that's okay. If we can have three speaking for a very large number of you, and even before they stand up to speak, we know they're speaking on your behalf, but I'll just ask for a show of hands, how many are here that are opponents of this project? Thank you. And can I ask for a show of hands, how many of you are here in support, proponents of this project? Okay, thank you. We're not taking, we're not counting the votes. This is not a caucus in Iowa, but I'm just trying to get an indication of who's speaking for who. Okay, so that helps me very much. And town clerk, could you read out the names of the three people who have signed up, and then they can come up in alphabetical order, or order of height, or whatever order they want to come up in?
Mayor, I believe the attorney has that sign-in sheet.
Okay, thank you.
I have the sign-in sheets. So the first speaker would be Ally Kristin.
Okay. Let's start with Ally. And again, thank you for condensing your comments and trying not to be repetitive with each other. There's a lot that's been said. Several of you have written very thoughtful and well-written emails stating your case to the council members. We have read those. We greatly appreciate your input. So with that, please state your name and address.
Sure. I'm Ally Kristin. I live in Fuquay, but my father managed Paragol for over 30 years. So I want to thank everyone for all of your attention to this case for the past 18 months to two years. Council members, I appreciate your service and willingness to engage in conversation so many times. Jeff, I've sent you probably 101 emails, and you replied to every single one, so thank you for that. And Mr. Hodges, and Stella, and Terry, I appreciate all of your time and correspondence as well. I have timed this, Mayor Gupton, so just bear with me. I know by now you guys are plenty tired of hearing my voice, and I'm definitely tired of talking about this too, but it keeps coming back up. I've been trying to fight this for two years now, since before anyone else even knew what was going on, but we really believe in what we have to say, and we have something special to fight for here. And I'm not alone. I know we kind of did this already, but everyone in this room who opposes the development, if you could please stand up, that would be great. And please, if you're standing, raise your hand if you know of others who oppose but couldn't be here tonight due to health, work, childcare conflicts. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. You guys can sit down. So I'll briefly go over our main reasons for opposing. Paragol has been out of business for 381 days while that land has sat untouched, and Paragol actually asked to continue month-to-month until construction began, because this land hasn't even been sold yet, but they were told they had to be completely out before 2023 ended. My personal belief from that, and from things I've heard too, is that the developer was trying to receive an economic development incentive or tax break or something like that for developing unkept land, when really it was a thriving business for over 40 years. Now, that's bad business to try and enter into Garner by putting people out of business just to get a tax break on their backs or whatever is going on. The applicant has been deceptive to the surrounding community and Garner, so we can't trust what they're saying. They've heard repeated extreme concern from us and from you, starting way back in the neighborhood meetings, and yet they've refused to make meaningful changes. For this whole time, they pretended they couldn't provide a 100-year flood plan until this past Friday over a holiday weekend, and none of us have seen the flood plan, so I'm not sure what that's about. They've refused to share environmental analysis results from the gas tank underground. They were deceitful to you guys in a council meeting about the amount of meaningful open green space that's not just stormwater retention ponds or trees. Let's remember that this developer is related to Kane Realty, which promised you downtown south years ago, but has yet to deliver and is saying that they don't have the money to do so right now. Their submission of last-minute conditions on a Friday evening over a holiday weekend right before the final vote is a perfect example of disingenuous behavior intended to get their way with this vote and make money, not intended to work with the community and improve our lives. They're presenting you with virtually the exact same plan they presented to Planning Commission in November, and they unanimously voted no, which is like unheard of, so I think that's a pretty big deal. I want us to remember that Planning Commission didn't just vote no because they wanted 20 affordable housing units and a promise of a 100-year flood plan somewhere down the line. They voted no because this plan is inconsistent with the recreation zoning of the land use plan, and because the building heights are inconsistent with the future land use plan that has since been voted in, because it's taking advantage of a loophole in the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. I don't know how we keep finding it consistent. You guys are considering apartments as commercial, which is kind of a loophole, because the whole point of not allowing high-density residential development in the Swift Creek watershed is to protect the watershed, which is all of your drinking water. So saying that apartments are commercial defeats the whole purpose of trying to not have high density in a watershed. Anybody in the entire Swift Creek watershed can sue you for polluting it with unnecessary development, and that's like most of the triangle, so that's something to be aware of, and that we've had neighbors who have spent thousands of dollars already investigating that with environmental lawyers. They voted no because the traffic to impact analysis is out of date and doesn't include the thousands of new approved apartments in the very immediate vicinity. They voted no because of concerns about grading and flooding and lack of usable open space for the public. I'm insulted that now they say, oh, you could have a driving range here when there's not enough open space to do so, and you just shut down a very successful driving range. So I'm not interested in hearing that. They voted no because this development wants to put 12 dwelling units per acre density smack in the middle of a one-dwelling unit-per-acre neighborhood on septic and well water, and that violates basic land use principles of gradual changes in density. They also voted no because they have design experts who volunteer on the planning commission because they're passionate about design, and they thought this was just designed poorly and needlessly excludes the surrounding neighborhood. And I want to mention that the 120% AMI of affordable housing means 20% more of the average income, if I understand it, so I wouldn't even be able to afford that as a full-time professional working for environmental policy. So that's not affordable housing. And that doesn't even address the main concerns we've been bringing to you for years now. It's just a ruse. So in conclusion, I want to say that thousands of apartments have been approved, all up and down 401, many sold by the same families. We're here fighting for this one particular property, which may seem strange to you, and I know now it looks overgrown and decrepit, and somebody posted a picture of like a deer carcass out there or whatever, but that was, I believe, intentional on behalf of the applicant to make you think they're doing you a favor when really Paragol wanted to keep growing. Back 30 years ago, when nobody wanted to live in what they called ghetto Garner, Paragol was the only thing that brought people into this community, and now having this monstrosity of a housing complex is just going to draw people out of the place that they wanted to live before. live before because of the feel of it. This isn't a decrepit piece of land. It's a beautiful space that means a lot to a lot of people and provides shelter for wildlife who have nowhere else to go, birds who return to nest year after year, and protects the Triangle's main watershed. If you vote no today, please don't worry about this land being a waste space. I don't think that's the case. We've been on WRL, ABC 11 Today, front page of News and Observer. People know about this valuable piece of land. Something better will go here, something that supports a healthy and safe and happy community, and we look forward to it, but not this developer and not this project. We're tired, and we're angry, and we're concerned, spent thousands of dollars on legal fees, and we're united as a group of working-class citizens who care much more deeply about this community than the applicant does. So, we're begging you guys to finally hear us and vote no tonight, and don't let this applicant take advantage of us, because Garner can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you. And our second speaker, our second speaker?
Emilio, Armilio?
Yes, Joe, and please be sensitive to the staff who's working overtime, and let's try to keep it three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Malillo. I'm in Pine Dale Acres. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. First, I want to start off, again, adding my voice to, of thanks to all of you for the fair hearing, hearings over this whole process for the last couple of years. We're all very deeply appreciative of that. There's not much I can add to what Ally so wonderfully put forward, so I'll be pretty brief. And I just want to say that this plan is not right for the town of Garner or for our surrounding communities. The applicant has been less than upfront with council members and residents. They've made minimal changes when asked by the council, and their proposal was unanimously denied by the Planning Commission. Their latest changes are too little, too late, and actually raise many red flags for us. For example, only now is the applicant willing to include affordable housing. As a working-class community, we understand the need to alleviate the housing crisis, and we are not opposed to it. But the applicant seems less than sincere in their efforts, simply slipping it in to gain the town's sympathies. And interestingly, they're offering a lot less than they did for the Downtown South development that they planned. They still have not adequately and openly addressed stormwater issues, open space issues, parking issues, or soil contamination issues, just to name a few things. For us, these are all clear signs that working with the applicant will not turn out well. So, please, we ask you to vote no to this application, giving the opportunity for a better plan to arise, one suited to the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan to our neighbors, one that will include a viable solution to affordable housing, while making the area one in which people want to live, not simply a concrete jungle busting at the seams with automobiles. We feel our community could use a break, given all the allowed developing developments that are going up within a mile of our neighborhoods. And I'll end, as I usually do, with my shameless plug for a large swath of this area to become a park, similar to what other areas have, such as Bond Park in Cary or Apex's Community Park. That will protect wildlife and also give our children a place to connect with nature and to just be kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. And Ms. Jones, our third speaker?
John Cooter.
If you would state your name and address, please.
My name's John Cooter. I live at 1903 St. Patrick, so I would be almost across the street from the pond on the right. At any rate, McAdams made their, got an environmental study, but they never made it public. There's an existing pond at the golf course that, to my knowledge, has never had any chemical analysis done on it to see what kind of pollution there could be in that pond. Since it was a golf course, and a lot of chemicals are usually used to maintain a golf course, I would be concerned about the environmental impact of bulldozing over that pond, or whatever the proposed action is in that case. The population density of trying to put 600 to 800 people on 47 acres seems to me a bit illogical. The cost to Garner to provide water and sewer for this facility, I think it should be put back into its original zoning in Wake County. I'm not sure that the city of Garner needs to be trying to take on the water and sewer for 600 to 800 more houses in that particular location. There's already sewer and water that is being provided to the facility across the street, the Georgia Landing, and it is a much less densely populated area. And that's the end of what I have to say. Originally, one of my comments before the previous council was try not to be ruled by necessary looking at what the advance might be, but you're adding to an already rather horrible traffic situation. I spent 20 minutes on 1010 going to my stepdaughter's house this morning. US 50 or Benson Road is also tied up. I think there needs to be some infrastructure improvements before we start talking about adding thousands of more people in projects similar to this to the Garner area, and that this is rather remote, if you look at it from the map of Garner. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for, thanks for your comments. Yeah, thank you all for your comments, and thanks for all of you for your nice behavior, well-behaved. Ms. Jones, I think that concludes these, and I'm probably looking to the council members now to see if there's a motion to be made.
Want to close the hearing?
Oh, yeah.
As to the annexation.
Close the hearing for annexation. Thank you.
By my understanding, you would defer the vote and have a joint vote on?
Yes, that's, we're looking for a joint vote, because it doesn't make sense to annex it if we're not going to rezone it. We can't rezone it if we haven't given ourselves the authority by annexation. So, it's a little catch-22. That's why we have to work through. And thank you again for your flexibility on that. So, that being said.
May I ask the attorney a question, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly, certainly.
So, one motion can be made, but it needs to include specific ordinance numbers and rezoning numbers in that, in that motion?
Yes, under state law, the town is allowed to consider the rezoning or the development application, but cannot actually zone the property without passing an annexation ordinance. But state law also allows this to be a concurrent or simultaneous motion with the same effective date.
All right, I'll, I'll try a motion. And Attorney Jones, correct me if anything I stated is out of order. Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny ordinance 2024-5239 to extend the corporate limits of the town of Garner to said property. Also, I move the town council to accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requests with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 6 of the staff report, and find the report inconsistent due to dramatic increases in density in this project as compared to surrounding neighborhoods in the area. Further, move the town to deny zoning CZPV 2203 as the request is not reasonable, nor in the public interest, because it will likely not provide housing that is in harmony with the adjoining older neighborhoods.
Mr. Singleton has made a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Vance seconds that motion. So, I think I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this one, due to the complexity and the specificity of this. And I think I'll start to my right with-
Mr. Mayor, if I can just clarify that you were, the finding is that it's inconsistent and not reasonable.
Yes, ma'am, inconsistent and not reasonable. Did I not say that? I'm sorry if I skipped the line. It's inconsistent and not reasonable, yes, ma'am.
Okay, are we good on our paperwork so far? Okay, thank you. Thanks for your improvisation there, Mr. Singleton, making, making something work. So, we have, we have a motion and a second to deny the annexation and the rezoning. And now, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. I'm going to start with Mr. Vance, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea.
Okay.
Are you, will you-
I'm not hearing a vote.
Okay, well, the motion's been made and seconded, and we're voting. Are you in favor of the motion which denies annexation and denies the rezoning? Are you in favor or not?
Okay.
Are you in favor?
The motion.
Yes. You're, okay, so that's unanimous. Five yays to deny the annexation and the rezoning.
Woo!
Five yard penalty for excess celebration. No, just kidding. Thank you. That's forgiven.
Thank you.
Okay, so, there's some other business to take care of. Y'all welcome to stick around, or I know you're probably eager to get home to your families.
Thank you.
Thank you for appearing.
in the lobby. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll try to resume business here where we left off. And that brings to item two on the public hearings, which is a conditional rezoning request on the Ackerman Road subdivision. Okay, and our presenter on the staff is Ms. Harris. What can you tell us about this project?
Again. So, this is Ackerman Road, conditional zoning CZMP 2206. Just a little bit of background information. This came to council about a year ago, I think December of last year, for the first time. And at that time, they had been proposing a combination of townhomes and single-family. Since then, they've amended their request to be just single-family, and it's gone through the review process, and also to Planning Commission with those changes. And so, since the project is considered less intense than the version that you saw previously, it was able to continue on in the process. So, the applicant is Construction Masters LLC. They are also the owner of the property. The site is located at Zero Ackerman Road, and it's approximately five, 7.57 acres. This is the Tier 2 master plan, which is the sketch plan and written conditions. And it's to conditionally rezone from single-family residential 40 to residential 9 cluster, not to exceed 21 single-family dwelling units. So, here is the site location. It's on the south side of Ackerman Road, adjacent to the Ridgemore subdivision and the Bigham Station subdivision, and then you can see Bryan Road Elementary just further south. Adjacent land use, so to the north is rural agricultural and single-family. To the south is combination, I'm sorry, is R4 and vacant. East and west is also R4. Those are those other subdivisions which I've mentioned. The applicant has proposed a number of zoning conditions. So, since this project was last seen last year, their use table has changed to allow for single-family detached and residential cluster subdivision. All single-family homes will have at least a two-car garage, and garage doors shall have carriage hardware doors and windows. Accent light fixtures a minimum of eight inches wide or eight inches tall will be required above all single-family garage doors. If dominant single-family first-floor finish, then the front elevations will have two types of fiber cement siding patterns. No vinyl siding will be allowed for single-family homes. All single-family homes will have a 24-inch stone or masonry water table on the front facade. Each single-family home will have a masonry foundation with crawl space, not including garage, turned-down slab or stem-waft foundation, minimum of 12 inches with brick or stone veneer. Single-family front elevations with cantilever productions would have cosmetic brackets. All single-family homes would have minimum eight-inch eaves on the front and rear facade, and a minimum eight-inch roof overhang on all sides. They also would have a minimum 100-square-foot deck patio or screened porch, a projecting-covered front porch, a minimum of 20 square feet, at least one trimmed window per habitable floor on the side elevations, and no more than 21 single-family homes would be constructed on the property. It is in the Lower Swift Creek Overlay District, as explained in Article 5 of the ordinance. New single-family detached residential would be limited to 30% total impervious surface area. Here is the revised master plan. This sort of northern pod here was previously where they were proposing townhomes. Those are now single-family. There is a stream that bisects the site with buffers, but there would be a pedestrian path connecting the north and southern portions. And then, the southern portion would tie into existing hazy hill lane, and then the existing stub steam engine way as well. There is an SEM proposed here at the southern portion of the site, as well as some of their tree canopy area would be in that buffered stream. There is a mail kiosk in the north, as well as in the southern section of the site. So, this project would use both the single-family detached R9 and the cluster residential R9 lot dimension standards. So, the minimum lot width for the cluster is 50 feet. For the traditional R9 would be 60 feet. The minimum lot area would range from 9,000 to 6,000 square feet. The front setbacks 25 and 20, and then the side setback, six feet minimum, or 15 combined, or 10 feet. In the single-family detached traditional, there's also a rear setback and a quarter-side setback requirement. This project did go to Planning Commission and was found to be consistent with the medium-density residential designation. That includes single-family duplex, triplex, quadiplex, and townhome-style residences, no less than two and a half, and no more than five acres, units per acre. It was also found to be consistent with the transportation plan, as this project would install curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Ackerman Road, and consistent with the Parks and Rec. and Greenways Master Plan, as there is no proposed greening corridor. This project did come to you previously for public hearing. There were questions about the open spaces and what qualifies, concerned about the precedent of the density of the infill. Again, this was when it was proposing townhomes, and then comments from the public regarding opposition to those townhomes, question about protection of the creek and connections to the stub streets in Bigham Station, and site distance and limited visibility along Ackerman Road. It did go to Planning Commission on October 9, and the discussion centered around how this proposal compares to the adjacent subdivisions in terms of density and lot size, clarifying that the dwelling units per acre calculation of the property includes the buffered stream, commenting that the town may need to lead a project to fill some of the gaps of the sidewalk on Ackerman Road, inquiring that the, about the stormwater and the flow of water across the site, inquiring about any existing wetlands, and the proposed drainage easements, and then asking if any runoff from adjacent properties would be captured through this development, clarifying the stream crossing, the proposed mail kiosk, and the connection to road, I'm sorry, the proposed mail kiosks and the road improvements along Ackerman Road. There were questions about the roof overhangs, the number of homes allowed to be built on the site, the building materials, and some other design features of the houses, suggestions that the homes maximize natural light for energy efficiency, inquiring about open spaces, and whether there was any wildlife present on the stream, suggestion to limit mass grading of the site and work to preserve more trees around the perimeter, clarifying the name of subdivision, and if they would be the same subdivision on the north side of the stream and the south side of the stream, or different, just because there's no internal connection with the roads. And then, there was a member of the public who spoke, who had concerns about stormwater, tree preservation, and traffic and safety along Ackerman Road. We did bring this- We did bring this project back to planning commission in December, just to clarify that they are pursuing the R9 cluster. We had discussed that at the previous meeting, but we felt that there was some questions we wanted to clarify with planning commission, that they were clear on that. So the planning commission accepted the consistency statement that staff had drafted, that they found this request to rezone 5.7 acres from single-family residential 40 to single-family residential R9 cluster conditional for the development of 21 single-family detached homes, to be consistent with the Town of Garner's adopted plans, including the future land use maps designation on medium-density residential. Your charge here tonight would be to make the final determination on reasonableness. And we did provide some recommended motions for you. And then I did just want to give you a before and after. So the first time you saw this project, there was the townhomes to the north that you can see, and the applicant has worked with neighbors and held additional meetings and come up with this plan here. The applicant is here. He's here to answer any questions that you might have, and that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Harrison. Let me ask the council members if you have any questions for Ms. Harris before she steps down.
I do have a question. There were, seems there were questions about the runoff in planning commission, and I probably had them a year ago. With the stormwater being the southern part of the property, what is the stormwater runoff situation for the northern part of the project?
So that pedestrian connection, I think, would be designed to convey the water from the northern portion and have a pipe that carries it to the southern portion to that same SEM, but the civil engineer could also speak to that.
Okay, and then the open space question, what were, because there's some R9 cluster that went over with planning commission, what is the requirement on the open space relative to that?
I don't think there's any difference in the R9 cluster from the traditional R9 open space that I'm aware of. Jeff, do you know of anything? Jeff's going to confirm with the ordinance, but I don't think there's a difference between the traditional R9 and the R9 cluster that I'm aware of.
I guess the other is just, and again, this has been a while.
25%.
And is all that being accounted for with the street canopy area, or?
It would be the buffered stream, and then the passive open space, which is that walkway between the two. And then if they amenitize around the mail kiosk, I think they can count that as well. It would have to be determined at site plan or subdivision plan.
Remembering this, I had some concerns about that connecting bridge going over the stream and that being necessary and also expensive, I would imagine, from an environmental standpoint. So I'm curious, not to have to have the cul-de-sac ending. I know we hate cul-de-sacs, but is that was sort of a, was that a UDO requirement, or was that a preference, a planning preference?
The cul-de-sac at the bottom?
Requiring the bridge and not just leaving a cul-de-sac as an extension of the existing road there.
So the connection to steam engine way, the steam engine way is out of compliance with the town code. I think it exceeds the maximum length. So by connecting, and they would be bringing that road into compliance, so yeah.
An expensive connection for a small development.
Any other questions from council for Ms. Harris? Okay, and did you say the applicant is here to answer questions but will not be making a presentation?
Correct.
Okay. Well, and reminder, this is not a public hearing, and I don't think any individuals have signed up to speak on this particular project. So that being the case, I'm going to ask if a council member wants to make a motion.
I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section Six of the staff report as our own, and I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2024-5236 approving rezoning CZ MP, I'm reading wrong one, right one, okay, excuse me, right one, CZ MP 22-06, as requested, is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely be of an overall design that keeps within the town's character of improvements, improves property values, encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites that are complimentary to the surrounding area.
Thank you. Mr. Vance, is there a second?
Second.
Hey, Mr. Matthews was the second. Mr. Vance made the motion. That being said, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed by nay?
No.
Okay, we have one no and four ayes, so the motion passes, motion carries. And that concludes that part of the program there. And that would put us moving on to committee reports. And we have some council members who are making reports on their various assignments.
Not this evening.
No reports. Okay, but I bet you we have some manager reports.
Yes, we do, and we'll start off with the talk of the town. I'll turn it over to Assistant Town Manager Miller to go through that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening is your January 2024 monthly Talk of the Town report. This report's a little different than the monthly reports that you've seen in that it gives you the last 30-day statistics regarding the Garner Info app, but we've also done a year review on the app as well, and so we'll briefly go over that. And then this month, we also have our quarterly development statistics added to this report as well. So looking at the front page of your report, you'll see for the last 30 days or so, we had 23 total requests. 70% of those requests are either completed or in progress, and our Public Works Department and our Engineering Departments are keeping very busy responding to those requests. You'll see to the left side of the pie graphs, also the type of request that we've seen over the last 30 days. If you go to the next page, this is where you'll see the full year report from the Garner Info app. For 2023, there were 398 total requests. You can see from the chart right below that we had sort of five primary areas where we had, most of the requests came in for these primary areas. Things like tall grass and weeds, pothole or pavement repair, street sign maintenance, miscellaneous items or repairs at our parks or town property, and then also garbage, missed garbage pickup, those kinds of things. So you'll see sort of what the top five are. And then there's a variety of other requests that have come in over the last year as well. At the bottom of this page, you'll also see for those top five request areas, what the request numbers have looked like or what the five-year trend has looked like for those top areas as well. Just something kind of interesting to take a look at. Page three gives you a further look at the analytics from the Garner Info app. What you see at the top of the page is a heat map, and what this map tells us, if you look at the areas which are orange or red, is sort of where the more concentrated areas are, where we have been receiving some of the requests for service. So it gives you a sense from a geographical perspective where we're seeing pockets of requests coming in across the town. And then the bottom half of this page will also give you from a year's perspective those departments that are responding most frequently to those requests, and what that trend looks like over a five-year period. It's probably not surprising that our Public Works, inspections, and Engineering Departments kind of round out the top three departments regarding responding to the requests that come in through the app. So that is the year review with the app. Before we go into the development statistics, I just want to pause for a moment and see if there are any questions from the council regarding the Garner Info app. The second part of this edition of Talk of the Town looks at your quarterly development statistics, looking at the quarterly COs issued for new residential, the trend for CO issued by month. We got a question on the total cost for new residential construction by the CO date, total permits and inspections per year. And as you can see, this continues to grow and grow, and you approved some additional budget dollars today to help with staffing for those increased service demands and inspections. So that's all the information we have for you this evening on the developmental, development statistics. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
I do have a question. On the total cost of new residential construction by CO date, what does that mean? What is total cost?
When the applicants apply for their permits, they're assigning a value to their project. So it is not a scientific number. It does not correlate back to tax value, but it's a somewhat of a litmus test for us or a unit of measure, because it is a valuation that is being assigned by the applicant for the value of what they're building. I will say that it does vary sometime from builder to builder, but is their estimation of what the project is costing to build.
I'm looking at that fourth quarter. So which projects are those? Are those, those are like several, I mean, obviously they're multifamily. Which ones are those?
I am forgetting who paid their permits in the last quarter. I may have to get that and get it back to you. It's one of the apartment complexes, I think, out at White Oak that paid the development fees, the permit fees, rather.
And just to clarify, for, so the, you have the quarterly COs, there aren't COs issued for individual units for the multifamily. So kind of what's a little missing here is how many units we're adding, residential units we're adding per quarter. And I know it's hard to tease out, but it kind of gets lost in between the quarterly COs issued for residential buildings and then this value. So if there's a way to kind of either pull them out completely separately and say, this number of residential, you know, this number of single-family and townhomes and then multifamily as two different charts, just a number of units, and then we can add them together, it'd kind of give an idea, because that's a, it's hard to even know how many units that is, but it's a lot. It's a lot of project.
And Mr. Page, just, he was in his office working, and he just came in to offer some additional information. Great, council. So the two large apartment complexes was 601 Tryon Road over there at Junction and Tryon Road, and the other one was Terran Apartments down near 401 Exchange.
And would it be possible to get the sort of breakout of single-family townhomes and then multifamily in two different charts in terms of unit numbers?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be helpful, and then we can compare the growth kind of relative to-
Yeah, I can pull this out, and I can just reset.
Okay, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good suggestion. Thank you.
That is my question. I'm done.
Good, good. Okay, other questions from council?
If not, that concludes our presentation for Talk of the Town this evening, and be expecting your February report in just a couple weeks.
Thank you very much.
Right. Next, we'll turn to Mr. David Beck from the Finance Department. He'll give us the overview of the quarterly financial report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Just want to hit a few of the highlights from the financial report and then see if anyone has any questions concerning it. As you know, most of our property tax revenues come in in the months of November, December, and January, so two of those three months are reflected in the report that you have before you. I will say, a good number of folks wait right up until that January 5th deadline to pay, so the first couple of weeks of January have been, have been healthy with property tax collection. So those are on a, on a good pace as far as budget and what we expected this time of the year. Sales tax revenues continue to grow, although the growth rate has slowed quite a bit so far this fiscal year, but they're still in a, in a positive trend. We also continue to benefit from the higher interest rates on our unspent bond proceeds and other invested monies that continue to generate a good return on investment for us. On the expenditure side, just wanted to point out one thing. The debt service, we have a pretty large debt service payment that comes due February 1st, so we will pay most of the rest of our budget for that line item for the fiscal year within the next 30 days. So I just wanted to point that out. That's a pretty, pretty big one-time expenditure coming up that'll, you know, impact the bottom line, but it was budgeted and planned for, and other side seems to be tracking on pace with budget as well. And, you know, we're still in a, so far through the fiscal year in a surplus position, which we would expect with most of our property tax revenues coming in, and a lot as we go through the year, but all, all the trends are positive at this point, and be glad to answer any questions regarding the report.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Excellent. Thank you.
So next I'll call on Town Engineer, Ms. Leah Harrison. She will give us the overview of the capital project report, and it's in front of you on the daisier.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I apologize, I'm a little under the weather. I adopted all the funk the kids have been passing around, so I'll try to keep it clear. So you have your quarterly capital projects report. I'll just go through some highlights of things that have happened recently on capital projects, and then, of course, any questions that you might have, I'd be happy to answer. So starting off with street and sidewalk projects, we have the White Oak Groundabout is trying to get closer and closer to construction. As you probably saw from our town attorney, we were able to agree with one of the outstanding easement acquisitions that we had. We are currently waiting on a final acquisition piece that will allow us to relocate utilities. Other than that, that project is 100% designed, and we're still hoping to go to bid in the March-April timeframe on the roundabout. On Sausage Road, I know most of you have heard a whole lot about this project recently, but we're moving forward with the design on the rescoped option for that, and moving forward with accepting the LAP funding from Campo to move forward with that project. And then on the 2023 resurfacing project, we have finished all the asphalt and concrete work for that. The only thing that is remaining is some striping that will take place in the next couple of weeks. So that contract is largely complete, and we are working on our street list for the 2024 contract now. So we'll hopefully get that out toward the end of the month, beginning of February. Looking at facilities, the Town Hall Annex, we're still hoping to put that out to bid toward the end of March. We recently were able to order the generator, which has about a year lead time, so we're getting some of those, those big items taken care of. At the Garner Senior Center improvements, we have an RFQ for architectural services that closes tomorrow, so we'll move forward with selecting an architect for the larger improvements that we're looking at performing there, including replacing the HVAC system and upgrading the bathrooms. On the South Garter Greenway Extension, one item to note there is that we did put in a LAP application for that project this year, and LAP funding has been recommended to the Campo board. We will find out by the end of the month if, you know, that is confirmed, but it has, it has been recommended, and that is around $2 million, $2 million of LAP funding that we hope to receive for that project. And then one more on stormwater. Forest Ridge Road is likely to go out to bid by the end of January, so that will be the next one that we will be starting construction on, and that is rehabilitation of the culvert at Buck Branch on Forest Ridge Road near the high school. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. The one thing I did not have included in this today is some of the updates on DOT projects. I know, Mr. Vance, it's always what you're interested in. I have some of those that I might have answers. I think with the holidays, I've had a much harder time tracking down people for timelines this time than usual, so we're, we're happy to hunt down any of them that you would like to know about. I know the 50 Bridge keeps getting pushed little by little. It is still currently slated to go to bid this spring, so we're hoping that that is still current. And we have begun very preliminary discussions with DOT about the replacement of the Vandora Springs Bridge at 70, and also the Grove Mont Bridge. So those two are, are very early, but on their radar. Thank you, and happy to answer questions.
Leah, about the Main Street, Rand Mill Road or Main Street street skate, does that include any resurfacing on Main Street itself? Because I noticed on the east end, it's really in, in rough shape.
It is. That, the street skate project does not, other than it is anticipated to include some work right at the intersection. Our plan is, once that project is complete, and we do have some private construction going on down there as well with the townhomes, and we also have the Pearl and Parker Street project. So our intention is to get some of those construction projects finished, and then- and then come back and resurface Main Street and likely down Rand Mill as well, so that we don't resurface and then have the heavy construction traffic tearing up the new asphalt.
What's the projected timeframe?
I would say probably in the next, probably not on this year's resurfacing contract, potentially next year, but probably more likely '26.
And also the, where the water line broke several weeks ago near the rec center, they're still, they filled in the hole, but the asphalt is still bulging and not smooth and bumpy to ride over. That needs to be, that needs some attention. It's a pretty large hole and it's, well, not a hole anymore, but it's, it needs to be looked at.
Okay, we can check it out.
Harrison, the striping project was curious. Fifth Avenue up here on the west side where there are parking spaces against those businesses, they're pretty non-existent. I didn't know if the striping project included those.
It does, it does not with the 2023 resurfacing. That was not included. We can take a look at it and see if that's something we'd like to include in the 2024 contract, which should be coming up pretty soon.
Because they're basically, especially on the western end, they're, you can't, they're no lines. It's basically all, they're worn out. And the top bar needs to be replaced in the air at the top. But anyway, the parking spaces just are not, almost nonexistent as far as seeing them.
Okay. Yeah, I can take a look at when that street is coming up for resurfacing. If it looks like it's coming up soon, then it makes sense to do it at the same time. But if it's not, we can look at it as just a standalone striping.
Mayor, I've got just two quick questions. One, on the Stormwater assessment. What's sort of the timeline for that? And is it sort of on, within budget for being funded with bond funds still? Or do we not?
It is, yes. So we have, we received a grant, which was through the ARPA funding, a program called LASSI. And we received $400,000 grant for that project. So we had already anticipated using some bond funding for that project. And then that grant just basically allows our money to go further. So between the two, we should be good to go. Yep. We, yeah, that will probably take most of this year. We finished Phase 1, which is really gathering the data and making sure that everything is in our GIS platform. And the part we're starting now is the fieldwork, where they'll actually go out and look and catch basins and camera pipes and take a look at what's going on.
Thank you. That's good news. You need to come and tell us when we get money.
Lead with that. Add that to highlights.
Lead with the grant money. The other question is, I had a resident reach out to me about the roundabout and they had pointed out that the diagram was inconsistent with the video on terms of which the primary, what were the yielding lanes? And they said they'd reached out to your department and gotten an answer, but then when I heard back from them, it wasn't clear what the answer was. And it might be helpful just to maybe send all of that to council on which is the final version, because one didn't make sense to me either. And I'm not sure which one is the final one. So I did that, then I can, we can have the conversation from there, but I didn't want to take secondhand feedback and try to figure out what the situation was.
Sure. Yeah, we can talk about it. And we did speak with someone about that, so it's probably the same person.
Probably the same person, yeah.
Yeah, I think Lisa, our senior project manager, talked to her. And there is, I think, the video that was made, which is helpful because it shows sort of the movement around the roundabout, but it was made fairly early in the project. So there have been some changes since then and as far as who merges coming in and out of the roundabout. So if that would be helpful, I can send those two and explain which one is, the way that it's happening and why we went that way.
I think we, just get rid of the one that's not the one we're going to do, because I think it confused people.
Just make it go away.
And I don't want to confuse me. So just, if you could just send what the final is, and then we can discuss it from there. That would be good. All right. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions on that?
All right. Not on that. I was going to the next item. All right.
Next, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Leah. So I'm gonna call up Deputy Chief Mackiver. And he is gonna give us an update on some of the tents that we've seen in the triangle there by the town's entryway sign at 401 and Mechanical, so.
Good evening again. As of last report, we're down to 110 out there. And we're working on voluntary compliance at this point to get everybody off of that property. The City of Raleigh has indicated that they would help us if we needed their help into forcing some type of trespassing laws.
That's excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much for the feedback. It seemed complicated, but all of a sudden it seems pretty simple.
Well, it's in the City of Raleigh technically. So we did reach out to City of Raleigh PD today and they indicated that they would help us achieve our goal. And, but we went out there this afternoon and talked to the folks staying out there and asked for voluntary compliance. And so far, the vast majority of them are complying.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your very thoughtful handling of that very sensitive topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my reports.
Wow. We're moving right along. And we flip over to the next page of the agenda and we see that the town attorney might have a report for us.
A report this evening.
And council comments. Any other comments from our council members?
There is a house on Main Street. I believe the address is 321 West Main. It looks like that there may be holes in the roof. I don't know whether it's occupied or not, but there, on the right side of the roof, on the front portion of the roof, that there are, if anybody's living in it, they're getting wet. So we can have that looked at. And a question about the former Max TV building. Is there anything, anybody in that building? Is there anything going on?
There had been a business operating out of it since it was sold. I don't have a current update.
Sold again? I mean, sold to a business and now they've sold it?
No, I'm only aware of one sale, but it could have transacted again and I'm not be aware of it, Ms. Behringer. But as far as I know, the folks that originally bought it were operating their business, but that could have changed. So we can try to get an update on that.
Thank you. I would like that. And just would like to ask that we get notifications about events a little earlier. We got the email about the MLK event on the 10th. And the event was on the 14th. I missed it because I had previous commitments. And also, we got a message a few days ago about a GEDC meeting. And again, it came not even a whole week before the meeting. And that's very difficult to adjust your schedule that way. I can't go to either, miss the MLK meeting, first one I've ever missed, and I can't go to the GEDC meeting at all.
Good observation. Thank you. We have to plan further and further in advance these days. So many, so many things going on.
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor. One, how many people in here know, remember when Max TV was operating out of the Max TV building? I bet there are many. So me and you. Second, the townhome project that was approved some time ago, probably a couple of years ago, on Pearl Street, which has had some infrastructure done, some Kermit Gutters done. I believe the project's been sold once. I believe there's a for-sale sign out there now. Do we have any status update on what may be happening with that project?
It's been moving forward. I know at one point they were waiting on easements from Duke and the easements were involved in the town and Duke. And so I think all those easement issues were worked out in probably the last 30 to 60 days. The sale sign that's out there now is a for-sale sign by the broker who's going to be marketing the townhomes, or at least the sign that I've seen. There could be another one out there, Mr. Singleton. But the small blue sign is at least the broker who's under contract with the builders to sell the units. So there has been activity going on. It's not--
It is moving forward at this time?
Yes, it's moving forward at this time.
And they are working on reconfiguring those power lines, because there have been some new power poles placed in the area, which was part of the power--
The de-easement issue was, took quite a while to resolve.
Understanding was that it was sold about three times since we granted the permit to begin with. Gone through a few hands before it's gotten to this point.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions here?
Yes, sir. I would just like to mention the MLK celebration that was held on this past Sunday on January 14th. That was well-done, well-attended event. And I would say, I'd like to recognize our own IT team. The IT team for their, for their, for their receiving the MLK Dream and Action Award, one of them, and--
Communications, Mr. Vance.
Communications, yes. Yes, for all the support they have provided and the excellent support they've done for the town and also in recognition of just all, all the great work they've done, really. So that was really a great event, a good time. And I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Indeed. The video presentation, the whole lights and sound of the whole place was really way above average. I commented too, the operators on the way out, they could not have been nicer, the whole thing. Great. Any other comments or questions here? Well, we're considering moving to a closed session, I think. Ms. Jones, is that, so we need a motion to move to a closed session to handle a personnel-related issue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have the citation for that. And the citation for the closed session is NCGS 143138.11A6.
There's a motion to move to a closed session. Is there a second?
Aye.
I think it was, by Mr. Matthews. Of moving to a closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Passage unanimously. Thank you. Move to a closed session. All opposed, by nay. Passage unanimously, thank you. Uh, move to a closed session.
From the closed session, which we closed the closed session. We're going to reopen the open session, okay? And that being said, is there a motion to close the open session?
Motion to adjourn. Yes, sir.
Made, is there a second? Okay. Made by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of this motion?
Mr. Mayor, if point of information, do we not supposed to state that we came out of closed session and what we discussed, basically the personnel matter, before we close the session?
So said, well said. Noted.
Got you. And you can confirm that no action was taken or no motions were taken?
Okay, all right. Yes, so we went into closed session to discuss a personnel matter and no action was taken.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's why we had a motion to adjourn this one. And it was made and was seconded. All in favor of adjourning this session signify by saying aye. Any opposed by no. Hearing none, unanimously we adjourn. Thank you for keeping me between the ditches and out of federal prison. It's over.